Back to adjourned finance, or who else is missing? We're gonna do finance first. All right, so we're reconvene back into finance. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call the February 28th, 2022 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Hazelton.
Present.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of February 14, 2022, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Can I get a vote again?
Pardon?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening, and will get a meet, meet two weeks. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Safety, and Sanitation will hopefully be scheduling a meeting in April, either the first council or prior to the first finance meeting in the second week of April, or the fourth, whichever is going to be more conducive for Chief Kenny, Chief Walters, and Mr. Pakoli. We're just gonna have a short 10-minute presentation by each department head to just give us an update of what, what you've got planned for this year, and we can share that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing scheduled and nothing to report.
Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. We originally had a, a meeting scheduled for this week, but that has been canceled, and it's going to be rescheduled for March 16th, which is a Wednesday at 5:30 here. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now, I will be scheduling a meeting, depending on when everyone is available. It will be the end of April, beginning of May, I believe, before all the interested parties are able to meet. But we will be meeting about the declining revenue stream of the Medina TV, and hopefully looking for a resolution for that. Other than that, no news and no definite date for a meeting.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report on the Emerging Technologies, Emerging Technologies Committee, however, we will be setting up the very first kickoff meeting of the Emerging Technologies Advisory Committee. It'll be, because of vacations, it'll be sometime after the 22nd of March. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action? We have several for the finance, 2234 fund transfer request, 2235 budget amendments, 2236 water connection at 4615 Abbeville, 2237 2021 carry forward ordinance, 2238 MCRC Senior Activities Coordinator Job Description Amendment, 2239 MCRC Marketing Job Description and Pay Rate Amendment, 2240 authorized payouts of 2021 unused vacation time, 2241 authorized easements West Smith Reconstruction, 2242 bids for job number 1115, 1105 South Court Water Tower Painting and Repairs, 2243 Stormwater Operation and Maintenance Agreement, Touchstone Properties, 2244 Stormwater Operations and Maintenance Agreement, Chick-fil-A, 2245 Amendment Ordinance 12717 Pavilion Rental Fees, 2247 Supreme Court of Ohio 2022 Tech Grain Application Muni Court, 2248 Right-of-Way Purchase West Smith Reconstruction, 2249 Authorized Lawsuit for RetrieveX Inc. and Access Information Management, and for the Water and Utilities Committee, 2246 Medina TV Funding and Operation Options. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 28th Annual Medina Ice Festival was held on February 18th through the 21st. Thanks to Elegant Ice Creations for continuing to host this event here. Also, our thanks to the title sponsor, Serpentinee of Medina, as well as many other sponsors and businesses who make this event so successful. This year had exceptional crowds and over 120 ice carvings. All I have heard from the local businesses, what it was, it was the greatest crowds and the business support ever. We're fortunate to have it here. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Police Chief Ed Kenny. He recently attended the 14, 14-month Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program at the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy in Columbus. Of the 25 attendees, Chief Kenny was selected to be awarded the Chief Michael Cali Award. This award is presented to the attendee that performed exceptionally in the CLEE Academics, as well as an established record of community involvement. Chief Kenny surely does, and we are proud of him. Well done, sir. And next, I would like to invite up for a proclamation Lieutenant Dave Burke-Bickler to recognize his 27 years of service in our community on our police department. Say, City of Medina Proclamation, Dave Burke-Bickler. Whereas Lieutenant Dave Burke-Bickler has faithfully served his fellow citizens as a member of the Medina Police Department for nearly 27 years. And whereas he became a full-time officer on April 17th, 1995, whereas he was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant on September 30th, 2005, and whereas he was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant on July 23rd, 2010. Whereas during a long career in public service, Lieutenant Burke-Bickler has made many contributions, including commanding the special, Police Special Operations Division, which includes Communications, Detective Bureau, School Resource Officers, and the Records Division. And whereas he additionally acquired Emergency Medical Technician status in the National Registry Emergency Medical Technicians, was certified as an Emergency Police Dispatcher and Quality Assurance Coordinator, is a nationally certified domestic violence instructor, a field training officer, and was a founding member of the Medina Police Emergency Services Unit. And whereas, he has also served the citizens of Medina with his participation in many community organizations, including Let's Make a Difference, Alternative Paths, Medina Diversity Project, Medina Youth Initiative, and the Medina County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. Whereas the City of Medina, by this recognition, wishes to express its great appreciation to Lieutenant Burke-Bickler for his years of service, loyalty, and dedication to the community on the occasion of his retirement. And now therefore, I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize and commend Lieutenant Dave Burke-Bickler for his years of dedicated service to the City of Medina, and do hereby extend personal congratulations and best wishes for many more happy and productive years in the future. And I present this to you, Dave, on behalf of the city. God bless.
Thank you. Department Heads Council, General Public, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve this city for 27 years. I am happily leaving. This is the greatest city I've ever lived in. Everybody should be proud of the city, city government, and the residents of this city. Thank you again.
Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to residents that the city does have a municipal income tax, and that can be filed with Rita. Their website is www.rita-ohio.com. You can file there, or you can get the paper forms from there and file those either way. And then there's a couple items later on the agenda that came from finance. I'll address when we get there.
Thank you. Ms. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you. Wanted to tell Lieutenant Burke-Bickler, I'm gonna miss you not being here. Our department handles a couple thousand cases a year. Municipal Court gets in 16,000 cases a year. A lot of these cases are bewildering, sometimes astounding. One of the persons that I've always been able to go back to talk to is Dave. He has a great sense of humor, a good sense of intelligence, and much common sense. And I could say that about a lot of the officers in the Medina Police Department. It's been a pleasure to be able to go back and talk to him, and I'm gonna miss him not being here.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. And Dave, it's been a pleasure working with you, and good luck with your future.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening, but I wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Dave on his retirement, and best wishes to you in your, in your new role, wherever you go. And it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, and I'd also like to congratulate Lieutenant Burke-Bickler on your retirement, and wish you the best of luck in the future.
Mr. Pakoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, I want to congratulate Lieutenant Burke-Bickler. It's been a pleasure working with him all these years. He's been a good guy to have around here, and he'll be missed. I'm trying to think of who's gonna call me when the storm's here, and he didn't have any reservations on our snow and ice operations. Good luck, Dave.
Mr. Wardley-Parks, and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one update from the Rec Center. We do have a new program brochure out for the month of March. In there, you'll see some new programs that we are offering. And additionally, we are taking delivery of our new 10 treadmills this Thursday. So there will be at least a day without cardio equipment, treadmill cardio equipment at the Rec Center, but we're looking forward to that update. I want to echo what the others have said about Lieutenant Burke-Bickler. Although we've worked together a short time, it was always a pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were notified by ODOT that they are gonna be starting work on the Rowdy Team Project this spring, starting later this week. They will be setting up their Maintenance of Traffic, which will push all traffic to the south side of the road initially. They will maintain two-way traffic at all times, but they will be pushing traffic to the south side of the road for the time being, starting later this week. We also want to announce the, our Spring Grove Culver Project is gonna start next week. That will require us to close Spring Grove for about two months, starting March 7th. Lastly, I just want to wish best wishes and congratulations to Dave. It's been great knowing him. I've always enjoyed working with him, even though he is a Steelers fan.
Mr. Dutton, Planning Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, and congratulations to Lieutenant Burke-Bickler.
Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report. Lieutenant, I just wanted to thank you for helping me get through my first year, and wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you. Okay, confirmation of mayor's appointment. There's none there. Notice of Communication Petitions, none. Onfeness Business, none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public who have been given the opportunity to speak on any issue of concern which pertains to the city are in a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be, all comments shall be directed at the chair in a reasonable timeline. Five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair, or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Yes, this is Eric Stasiowski, 2883 Parnham Drive in Medina. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Board Chairman of Main Street Medina, and I would like to take just a couple minutes this evening to let the city council and our city administration share with you our new strategic plan that we just adopted as an organization. Before I do that, if we go to the next slide, 2022 actually signifies our 15th anniversary as an organization. So back in 2007, Ed Wright and others spirited the introduction of, of Main Street Medina. I won't go through every piece of the timeline here, but over the last 15 years, we've obviously had a tremendous relationship with the city and with its residents, and we continue, look forward to continuing that in the future. Relative to the strategic plan, if we go to the next slide, last March, the Board of Directors of Main Street Medina convened, and we had a retreat where we looked at our mission, our vision statement, which we, we did not have a mission, a vision statement, and we also started the process of developing our, our multi-year strategic plan. We did that by looking at that circle that's shown up on the screen there. We did a 360 view, which is on the right side. We looked outside in. So we talked to constituents, the community at large. We surveyed businesses, had sit-down meetings with key stakeholders like the mayor, county commissioners, and so forth. And on the left side of the circle, we looked inward. We looked at our financial performance over the last 15 years. We looked at our membership activity, where we were strong and maybe opportunities for growth. And we also did a self-assessment at the board level, took all those inputs with the Board of Directors, and what yielded was a three-year strategic plan that I have on the next slide. It was adopted in Q2 of last year, and we've applied it to this year's business planning. The mission reads on the screen, "To lead the effort for historic preservation, economic sustainability, and continued evolution of the district as the heart of the community." That mission statement pretty much stayed the same, although we did move the word historic a little bit earlier in the mission statement to emphasize and, and underscore that. The vision is new. It is be Ohio's premier small-town destination. That's whether you're a resident or a visitor coming into, into our city. The strategies, I'm gonna read it from my sheet of paper, because my eyesight's not that great. So we came up with four strategies, really in no particular order. The first one is to increase revenue and diversify sources of funding to enable greater reinvestment and impact in the community. So that's all about reinvestment back into the city, into the, the energy that we have here. Today, we have about three sources of funding, sponsorship, of which the city is a, is a significant sponsor to our efforts, and we thank you for that. We have some event revenue, and of course, membership. So we're looking to broaden the sources of funding over the next three years. Things like donor, capital campaign, donor, plant giving, that sort of thing. The second strategy's really got a marketing bent to it, so we want to raise awareness for Main Street Medina, position District South Town as a destination. So instead of spending four hours, six hours, spend a weekend here. We've already made some significant improvements along those lines. We've generated, created our first annual report, which we handed out this evening. Last week, we refreshed our website, so I encourage everyone to look at the mainstreetmedina.com, and we'll continue to make improvements there. Again, we're trying to raise awareness for this organization, so that we can drive more impact right back to the community. The third strategy is connect and engage beyond our boundaries, be inclusive of diverse audiences. That really speaks not only to diversity in the sense of making sure that we've got good representation on our board of the community, but also diversity of thought. And so that, as Board Chairman, is one of my primary initiatives, is to make sure that we are representative of this city, and all the stakeholders that enjoy the district. The last one, which is relatively new for us, is develop an advocacy voice. Again, looking at our businesses and our key stakeholders, to advance, A, business vitality, B, historical preservation, and C, community spirit. So we've get, as, as a city council does as well, we get a lot of feedback as to what could be the next generation for the square in South Town. And so we'll be developing our advocacy voice. The one other point I want to make is that this is our strategic plan, but it's also, we look forward to working with the city and their comprehensive plan, and make sure that these are aligned, especially in the area of South Town. So we do have representation on that committee, and look forward to continued conversations there. So that is our three-year strategy. And my last comment, the next slide, I want to say again, thank you to city council. We also, I did want to share with you, we do have an announcement that we are sharing tomorrow in a press release, so I thought I would give you in advance of, of the press release. So I'm gonna read the first paragraph and then say a couple words. So this will go out tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. The Board of Main Street Medina has announced that Matt Wieterhold has accepted the position of Executive Director of Heritage Ohio, the official statewide historic preservation and Main Street organization, and will be leaving Main Street Medina at the end of April. We have named, the Board of Directors has named George Sam, a resident of the City of Medina, currently the Main Street Medina Program Director as our interim executive director, effective April 24th. He will serve as the interim executive director as the board conducts a search for a full-time, permanent replacement. So prior to, so just a couple of comments. First, I want to publicly thank Matt Wieterhold, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, and also is just a, a good guy, a person that's been giving so much to this organization, and certainly to the city. You know, we don't get to a 15-year anniversary without Matt Wieterhold at, at our helm. And so it is bittersweet that he's leaving us, but I can tell you, there's probably no one more qualified in the state of Ohio, and maybe other states, to take on the head post in Columbus than Matt. And so the good news, he's still staying in Medina, so he's not too far. And we'll make sure we allow him to do his new job, but we are very excited for you, Matt. So thank you for your years of service. We will miss you. George Sam, he is our, as I said, our Program Director. He will be our interim executive director. He accepted his offer today, so that was helpful. And George has been with Main Street Medina for a little over four years, and has been integral to many parts of the programs that we've seen that you've, that you've benefited from. South Town, some of our marketing efforts, engaging volunteers into our organization, and the list goes on and on. By the way, he also did design our annual report, and he, in his spare time last month, or earlier this month, he
He has spare time?
redesigned our website. Yeah, 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 exactly. Does he have spare time? Not anymore, I can tell you that. As interim director, no. So with that, I wanted to again thank city council for this opportunity this evening. I want to thank the mayor and his administration for partnering with us, and having such a great collaborative relationship. Matt, we wish you tremendous success in your new opportunity. We will miss you, and we are excited to welcome George as our interim executive director, effective at the end of April. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate everything that Main Street Medina does for the, the city, and I can't believe it's been 15 years already. Time flies, of course, and great things have happened, and I assume great things will continue to happen with Main Street Medina, helping us, you know, continue the viability of the square and the surrounding area. We really appreciate it. And Matt, congratulations. I know, you know, you deserve it. You, you do a lot of work. You do a great job. And I know we gave you a resolution when you left before, but I don't know if we'll do it again, because we did it twice already, so I don't know. So, no, congratulations again. That's, that's a great honor. Is there any other comments from council? Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, Matt, one, I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be staying in Medina, living in Medina, calling Medina your home. I do wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors, but don't be a stranger. We're gonna miss you. Thanks.
Mr. Shields?
I just want to congratulate you, Matt. It's a nice honor, and I'm glad you were able to take this opportunity. We will miss you, but you know you can always come back to, that we've proven that before, so don't forget that.
Thank you. Mrs. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I, first of all, I can't believe I didn't even know about this until just now. I know, but I'm on the rumor mill, like, right on top of it. I can't believe I didn't hear this. But anyway, I will miss you tremendously, and I'm a little leery about George, because he's the one that got to me to wear that Madinosaurus costume around for a year, a year of Fridays, people, in the same plastic blow-up dinosaur suit. So, but seriously, congratulations. I'm very excited. I know how much you love Heritage Ohio. I know how invested you are. I know you're gonna be awesome. And honestly, as much as I joke about George, he's gonna do a great job, too. So thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, congratulations on your new challenges, and thank you very much for all your contributions. And your great, how do I want to say, the contribution you give to your, your, your home with your backyard gardens and things like that. Thank you very much.
You make Medina more beautiful, Matt.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
I want to thank Main Street Medina for everything they do for the city. I, I went to the, the Ice Festival two weekends ago. It was great, and great crowds. And it's a blessing and a curse. The curse was, I had a friend of mine who lives in Ripman text me and said she wanted to go to see the ice carvings, but there were so many people that she just drove straight on by. I got to witness all of the great carvings, but thank you very much for all the work that you do for the city.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Anything else? Thank you. Good to your presentation. Okay, we have introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2122, ordinance 2222, ordinance 2322, ordinance 2422, ordinance 2522, resolution 2622, ordinance 2722, ordinance 2822, ordinance 2922, resolution 3022, ordinance 3122, ordinance 3222, ordinance 3322, ordinance 3422, ordinance 3522, ordinance 3622, ordinance 3722, ordinance 3822, and ordinance 3922.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Ordinance 2122, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to turn into a development agreement with 5990 Branch Road LLC, an Ohio limited liability company pertaining to the Branch Road Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a developer agreement for, actually, Project Expert Crane. They are looking at acquiring the property at 5990 Branch Road, and the developer agreement outlines, outlines the city's responsibilities and the developers' responsibilities, and terms and conditions of their performance relative to extension of a water line, as well as a sanitary sewer line, and then the city's responsibilities. outlines the city's responsibilities and the developers' responsibilities and terms and conditions of their performance relative to extension of a water line as well as a sanitary sewer line, and then the city's responsibilities of bearing the costs of road renovations and storm drainage improvements. I don't know if Mr. Huber has anything else to add.
Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven zero.
Ordinance 2122, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to turn into a development agreement with 5990 Branch Road LLC, an Ohio limited liability company pertaining to the Branch Road Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a developer agreement for, actually, Project Expert Crane. They are looking at acquiring the property at 5990 Branch Road, and the developer agreement outlines the city's responsibilities and the developers' responsibilities and terms and conditions of their performance relative to extension of a water line as well as a sanitary sewer line, and then the city's responsibilities of bearing the costs of road renovations and storm drainage improvements. I don't know if Mr. Huber has anything else to add.
Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 2122 passes, seven zero.
Ordinance 2222, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of Technology Engineering Group LLC for the City Hall Server Upgrade Project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Sergeant Zaramba, this first one is a scale server architecture project. It's a full server backbone and disaster recovery update. The current server environment was done in 2013. Our current network storage unit is end of life, and getting support has been difficult for the last two years. Moving to the new scale environment, it's no longer a 3-2-1 architecture, which means three servers, two switches, and one network storage device. It allows us to build, he put this in plain language for me, like Legos, as we need to add space and not depend on any one vendor, can mix or match hardware as needed. Management is much easier, and deployment of the system is much faster and easier, and a snapshot backup approach allows for easier backup, or back-on-feed, a victim of ransomware or just need to recover data. It also has a module to allow for easier remote workers should it be needed in the future, as we experienced with the COVID. This is a replacement of the entire backbone server farm, which is currently 23 virtual servers, but fluctuates throughout the year based on the needs of city employees and job functions. It also replaces our hand-me-down equipment at the high school for our disaster recovery bunker that we have located there. We have a few pieces of newer hardware from existing environment that we will be able to move over and provide high availability to the really old server they have there and more storage. We will carry them, or this will carry them for three to five years at a very minimal cost and help save money there. We've already moved the Munich Court to this new scale technology and server architecture, and that's working very well. And I'll speak to this ordinance as well as the next. The need for the emergency clause is a supply chain effect, and we need to get this on order to get, to avoid the risk of having to wait later in the year to get these projects completed or potential into next year. Currently, the Rec Center is still waiting on PC orders from three months ago and still no delivery date for the PCs. So because of the age and volatility of our current system, we're asking for the emergency clause, please.
Thank you. The complexity in converting it into layman's terms was fine, but the brevity was not there, but we appreciate that. Any other comments on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Ordinance 2322, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 24 Dell computers, 24 monitors, and 25 Microsoft Office 2019 licenses from NJ Technologies for various departments at the city of Medina.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
As discussed on the ordinance, the emergency clause, the mayor mentioned all this about the supply chains and the reason for the emergency clause. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Orderance 2322, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 24 Dell computers, 24 monitors, and 25 Microsoft Office 2019 licenses from NJ Technologies for various departments at the city of Medina.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed in finance, but just briefly, we were not going to renew our liability insurance this year on the recommendation of our broker who assists with this, and then we found out that the insurance company we had was no longer covering municipalities, which forced us to start this process. And what is generally a six-to-seven, seven-month process has now been condensed to a little over three. The reason for the emergency clause is our existing insurance policy expires on March 31st, so we have to get the RFPs out, get all the information in, answer all the questions, evaluate the different companies against one another, and make a decision by then. So I respectfully ask for the emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Orderance 2522 passes, seven zero.
Resolution 2622, a resolution accepting a donation from Murray and Sue Van Epp to be applied toward the purchase of 12 indoor bicycles for the Medina Recreation Center.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Murray and Sue Van Epp agreed to fund $19,152, which is enough to cover 12 Kaiser bicycles to be placed in our newly renovated Community Room A at the Rec Center. I'd like to personally thank them for their contribution, they're avid cyclists in the community, and I know there's many residents and patrons that will enjoy them for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I just also want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Van Epp. They are so good to the city and do so many things to make this a better place to live, and I just appreciate all they do, and want to thank them again for this latest donation, one of very many nice things they do for the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 2622 passes, seven zero.
Ordinance 2722, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a conflict of interest waiver between the city of Medina and McDonald Hopkins LLC related to the Lindenwood Lake Dam Improvements Project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Medina became involved in assisting the property owners at Lindenwood Lake with the reconstruction of the dam. The riser that was built has some problems in that it is leaking slightly, and it's also leaning to the side slightly. The issue's going to be taken up with the contractor who built the riser. We retained an expert for an analysis of what's wrong, what needs to be done to fix it. The attorneys who will represent the contractor who built that riser are from McDonald Hopkins. McDonald Hopkins also is a law firm that the city of Medina uses for our bond counsel. The attorney with McDonald Hopkins I've been working with is a good man. He's been good to work with. He's knowledgeable as to what's happened, and so I would like to be able to continue to try to resolve this situation with this attorney. In order to do that, the council has to pass this waiver of the conflict of interest, if that's okay.
The emergency clause is because it's an ongoing dispute?
We'd like to get started on trying to resolve this soon, because the weather's starting to break, and we're coming into the construction season where repairs can be made, if we can do so.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Orderance 2722 passes, seven zero.
Ordinance 2822, an ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of rubberized flooring in the balcony area of the Recreation Center's main fitness room and mezzanine floor covering.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This project is to replace the rubberized flooring in our freeway area at the Rec Center through madder surfaces utilizing a source well contract. These will be activation one-inch-thick squares that will definitely hold up to the abuse that comes with the freeway area. This project is utilizing carryforward funding, and I do need authorization for the mayor to sign the contract. Total project amount's $29,750. Thank you.
Thank you. I was seeing the floor covering, not mezzanine. I was reading too fast. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Orderance 2822 passes, seven zero.
Orderance 2922, an ordinance authorizing a job creation grant agreement for Expert Crane, Inc.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for council to authorize the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Expert Crane Incorporated for the purpose of relocating their business to the city of Medina. This project will allow them to construct a manufacturing facility located at 5990 Branch Road. Expert Crane Incorporated will have an estimated investment in this project at $10,510,000, and they have committed to creating 48 new full-time positions with new payroll to the city of Medina of $3,980,000, with the bulk of those positions coming into the city in the year of 2023. This agreement will provide Expert Crane Incorporated with a grant up to 40% of new payroll taxes to the city of Medina for six years. The Business Development Committee did meet with the company on January 27th of 2022 and have made a recommendation to council for their approval. We are respectfully requesting approval of the job creation grant agreement, which has full-time positions with new payroll to the City of Medina of $3,980,000, with the bulk of those positions coming into the city in the year of 2023. This agreement will provide Expert Crane Incorporated with a grant up to 40% of new payroll taxes to the City of Medina for six years. The Business Development Committee did meet with the company on January 27th of 2022 and have made a recommendation to council for their approval. We are respectfully requesting approval of the job creation and grant agreement, which has been reviewed and approved by the Law Director. And as a reminder to council and the public, job creation grants are funded from non-income tax-generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 2922 passes 7-0.
Resolution 3022, a resolution authorizing a filing of a 629 roadwork development grant application with the Ohio Department of Development in conjunction with Jobs Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution, Mrs. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for council's authorization to submit a 629 roadwork grant application with the Ohio Department of Development in conjunction with Jobs Ohio. If awarded, the grant will be used to improve Branch Road from Commerce Drive to the westerly limits of Medina City Lot 8875, which is also known as the Fruth-Turner property, which is in our Cooperative Economic Development area that we have with York Township, and install storm sewer to drain the roadway. The grant has an estimated value up to $85,000, covering 30% of eligible roadwork costs, including engineering and design costs related to the job creation project of Expert Crane Incorporated. The project budget is still being determined, but estimated at $325,730. Finally, please note that in addition to the authorization to submit the grant application, this request asks that if successful, the mayor be authorized to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development accordingly. The reason for the emergency clause is Jobs Ohio has an offer on this, has offered this grant, which expires at the end of March, and we need to get approval through the state controlling board to secure and appropriate the dollars for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution and/or the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3122 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3222, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for the Gates Mills Culvert Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned, this is for the project to replace the culvert on Gates Mills Boulevard. I would note the project estimate is $531,000. We do have an Ohio Public Works grant that will cover $485,000 and some change of that cost. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 3222 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3322, an ordinance accepting the construction agreement for KMK Development Developers of Phase Two of Woodside Green Subdivision as required in Section 11173.08 CND of the subdivision code of the City of Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for Phase Two of Woodside Green, which consists of, I believe it's low, 100-foot-long installation of street pavement to connect current two dead-end streets, one adjacent to the township. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think there's a typo in here. There's an extra one in the section 111. It's only 1-1, I think.
Yeah, that should be 1173.
Yes. I think there's a lot of ones in there. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 3322 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3422, an ordinance authorizing expenditure to Baker, Dubikar, Beck, Wiley, and Matthews for legal services provided to the Law Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber.
The attorneys who are provided to us by our liability insurance carrier are the attorneys with the Baker Dubikar Law Firm. They are currently defending the City of Medina in four different pieces of litigation. The insurance policy provides a set amount of money that the insurance company will pay for attorney's fees. Once that fund is depleted, then the bill for defending the city falls upon the City of Medina and the general revenue fund. And on three of these pieces of litigation, we've surpassed the fund that the insurance company provides, and so this is a PO for $60,000 to allow this firm to continue to defend these cases.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Ordinance 3422 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3522, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Vern Frega and Danielle Frega for the purchase of property located at 368 Foundry Street, Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber.
This is a purchase agreement that if council passes it, will authorize the mayor to buy this piece of ground from these sellers at a price of $71,000. My understanding is that Jansen requested this so that the property can be added to some of the parkland that is adjacent to this property.
Yes, I think this will be a good addition to that area because we own the property all around it, and this will complete the area for our use. And I believe we're raising the building once we purchase it. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I just wanted to note that the purchase is utilizing American Rescue Plan funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 3522 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3622, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a certificate of compliance with procurement requirements and a memorandum of agreement between the Audit of State, Keys Faber, and the City of Medina and Rayen Associates, Inc., for the preparation of the 2021, 22, 23, 24, and 25 financial audits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes your emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for our audit. For the last few years, the State Audit Office has been doing it themselves. They decided not to do that now, and so it's contracted out, and Ray has been awarded that contract. This is our memo with them.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3722 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3822, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20121, passed December 13th, 2021, amendments to the 2022 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first three are just things that we need additional funds for this year, and then the fourth is the donation from the Van Epp's. Thank you to them that we mentioned earlier.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3722 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3822, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20121, passed December 13th, 2021, amendments to the 2022 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first three are just things that we need additional funds for this year, and then the fourth is the donation from the Van Epp's. Thank you to them that we mentioned earlier.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3822 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3722, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fund transfer we're making here is $100,000 from the Rec Center Fund to the Rec Center Capital Fund. This is pursuant to the joint operating agreement that we have with the city, or with the school where we operate the Rec Center together. We each put this $100,000 a year into a fund for capital.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 3822 passes 7-0.
Orderance 3822, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20121, passed December 13th, 2021, amendments to the 2022 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first three are just things that we need additional funds for this year, and then the fourth is the donation from the Van Epp's. Thank you to them that we mentioned earlier.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 3722 passes 7-0.
Orderance 3822, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20121, passed December 13th, 2021, amendments to the 2022 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first three are just things that we need additional funds for this year, and then the fourth is the donation from the Van Epp's. Thank you to them that we mentioned earlier.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 3822 passes 7-0.
Orderance 3922, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for qualifications, RFQs, requests for proposals, RFPs, for consultant services for the fiscal year 2022, City of Medina Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, and Community Development Black Grant, CDBG, program applications, including administration and implementation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. President.
Mr. Shields? The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes your emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mayor Hamel.
Andrew, I'll do this. Yeah, I can take that as a present. So this is a request for the city to advertise that we're accepting requests for proposals and qualifications for consultant services. This is an order for a consultant to apply for the program year 2020, CHIP and CDBG program. Again, we intend to make an application in partnership with the City of Brunswick. The emergency clause is being requested. His application is due on May 20. There are a number of administrative processes we need to go through before that time, as well as having the consultant draft the application.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Tyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.